By the city recorder, please.
Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Present.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you. You have a copy of the minutes on the regular session of September 13th, 2022 in your book. If you've had a chance to approve those, we'll accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to be approved.
Second.
You have a motion on the board then to approve the minutes of the regular session September 13th of 2022. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And a nazed-like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Now I have proclamations and a recognition of citizens by the mayor. We have a proclamation for the Newport Grammar School Girls Volleyball Team. I will read those from the podium, I guess. But when I read these, we were being requested that we take the picture behind the table here instead of in front of this door by our assistant, Mr. Regina Horn. My martial arts. Newport Grammar School Lady Warriors Volleyball Team. Whereas, the 2022 Newport Grammar School Lady Warriors Volleyball Team has had many team accomplishments this season. And whereas, Newport Grammar School Lady Warriors Volleyball Team consists of Carmichael, Abby Cleffiger, Meredith Grooms, Hayley Lowery, Iona Massingill, Krista Patel, Ellie Profit, and Molly Roberts. And whereas Newport Grammar School Lady Warriors Volleyball Team was coached by Barb Suggs and Donna McConnell. And whereas Newport Grammar School Lady Warriors Volleyball Team had an undefeated regular season. And whereas Newport Grammar School Lady Warriors Volleyball Team won the county volleyball tournament. And whereas Newport Grammar School Lady Warriors Volleyball Team won the Division One area tournament by winning four straight matches. And whereas Newport Grammar School Lady Warriors Volleyball Team, for the first time ever, won the TM SAA tournament on October 1st by winning five matches in one day. And whereas Newport Grammar School Lady Warriors Volleyball Team finished the season as a top-four team in the state, and there was no state tournament for volleyball. And now, therefore, in order to pay tribute to the Newport Grammar School Lady Warriors Volleyball Team, I, Roland Dykes III, Mayor of the City of Newport, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim October 11th, 2022, as Newport Grammar School Lady Warriors Volleyball Team Day, and commend all citizens to recognize and support them on this great day. In witness whereof, I am here to set my hand and affix the seal of City of Newport, Tennessee, the 11th day of October, 2022. Who wants to accept the proclamation? Congratulations. Regina, who wants in front of the guy at the table or a high?
Put him behind.
Aye. Okay, Regina.
While the girls are sitting down, I'd like to also give my thanks to the support staff to the girls volleyball team. The school really supports the girls and the boys in their endeavor. We've got Justin Marleau, stand up, Justin. And Rhonda Williams, stand up, Rhonda. They're there for the girls. Sandy Burgess out of town, or she would have been here because she was there at most of the games. So the girls really appreciate y'all's support. And you girls are excuse.
You're welcome to stay if you like to.
Okay, we now have our communications from a city administrator, Mr. James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I'm going to have to ask that we suspend the rule and add something to the agenda tonight. Gary, did you fix a sheet for them on this summary sheet on this T-Dec money?
That, the thing with the change in the purchase option wrapped me up today.
What we became aware of is that this, we knew for a while that we were qualifying for this money. As I understand it, it's more state COVID money, but it's for infrastructure. That's all it can be used for, which is water, sewer, storm drain. And it's our intent to address some storm drain issues that we're having in Richland Park, also over in to North Port, upon the bluff back in there, and a couple of other places if there's enough money. But we have to respond by, and I did not know this till Rob Mathis brought it to our attention last Friday, Thursday or Friday, that we had to respond by November 1st or we lost the money. So the books had already gone out, and we couldn't get it into your books in time. So we need for you to add that to the agenda tonight and to vote so we'll stay within policy that we will accept that money if it's given to us. So, you know, it's weird, but you have to vote to accept money, so.
I feel like we'll vote again once the project's approved, and that'll be more, yeah, we'll have to have an actual ordinance at that point.
Correct, because at this point, we don't know exactly how much it is until we are award, actually awarded, and notification of award, then we'll know exactly how much it is, and then we have to vote to accept that amount. So, but right now, mostly right now is to stay within our own policy, to vote that you all agree to move forward with this process. So I would ask that you all add that to the agenda tonight if you would, and I apologize, this is the second month in a row I've asked you guys to do this. And so we try our best not to let that happen, but we just became aware of it at the end of the week, last week, that there was a deadline looming. I didn't know there was a deadline looming until Rob brought it to my attention, so.
So do you want to make a motion?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to add this item to the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion on the board to suspend the rules and add this item to the agenda. Has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And a nazed-like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, I appreciate it. The second thing I have is I want to readdress something that I talked about last month. There's been further developments on, and I want to make sure that the record always stays straight on everything we do, not just this item. But last month, we talked about the damage to the walls at the Tanner Building. And it was our understanding that the children of Walter State Teacher Professor had caused the damage to the walls. What has now been determined is that it was a partnership employees, children, that did the damage. Now, she was supposed to come in and talk to me last week about it, and she never came in. So I don't have any further news about that other than she did say that she wasn't aware of it, and she was going to come talk to me about it last week. We didn't set any ties, told her to come whenever, and we never said a day or a time that she, I never heard anything else from her. So I think Walter State was a little offended because they felt like they had been falsely accused publicly, so I will set the record straight. It has been determined that it was not a Walter State Employees' Children, but that was the best information we had at the time. It was not something that we would just do arbitrarily to just pull that out of the air and say, well, this is what happened, we didn't know. But that was what we had led to believe, were led to believe, and hadn't heard otherwise until that came out in the paper. So I do want to set the record straight on that. It was not a Walter State Employees' Children, it was a partnership Employees' Children. All right. Garbage trucks, you know how things, they say things go in threes? Well, three of our garbage trucks have gone down in the last two weeks, and so we're having to improvise to get the garbage picked up. Now, the good news is we got one of them back late this afternoon, so we're going to be able to do better. But I don't know if you all might have had a phone call about somebody, from somebody saying, well, why hadn't the garbage run this morning? Because I know how particular people can be about staying on schedule. If the garbage truck usually, it's like the mailman, you know? If the garbage truck usually runs at 10 o'clock in the morning, at 10 o'clock in the morning they're watching for them. And if they don't come, then they start wondering what's up. So we have kept up, but it's been a struggle. We had to, because we had to use regular trucks to pick up the garbage, we had to put everybody on garbage to keep the garbage routes covered. But with the return of that truck this afternoon, that's going to help us get back on schedule. And so two of the trucks that went down, and Ben can tell you in more detail the mechanical issues, but it was the same thing on both of them. And it's under, should be under warranty, but we had a separate issue on the third truck. And it was an older truck that had a different issue that is common with garbage trucks. But just our bad luck, they all three went down within two weeks' time. So Ben and I applaud the job he's done trying to stay on top of that to get the garbage picked up, but he did have to change his resources around and commit more people to be able to do it with regular vehicles as opposed to garbage trucks. The last thing I have is that since our last meeting, I've had several meetings with county officials, the mayor and I on some, and just me on some. We met with Mayor Mathis, I've met with Sheriff Ball, and I'm very pleased with the attitude and the things we've talked about, about trying to work together to move the city and county forward, that everybody needs to be on the same page and working towards a common goal. And both of them, I firmly believe, are committed to that. And that was very refreshing, and I look forward to working with them. We're already in talks about, because they're having a lot of problems with their animal control, their animal control officer resigned again, I think Friday. But we're looking at copying the Green County setup and possibly do a consolidated animal control here, the city and county, and build a new facility down in the old industrial park. Mayor Mathis and I talked about that, and Mayor Dykes, about the city's need to purchase the property down there. We had thought we were going to get the property that Blaylock bought, now Blaylock won't work with us. So CJ suggested that they still had a little surplus property where they're looking at building the Justice Center, and that they could possibly come up with something there, and Rob said he would look into that and pursue that. And hopefully, because we absolutely need to get out of town and get a facility that we can work out of. And to me, you know, the way the Green County model, when Tina and I went and looked at it, I thought was great, a great setup, and it's been my goal ever since I saw that, to mimic that here, because I think it's the best and efficient setup that there is. So we want to try to work with CJ and Rob and try to look at making that happen, and we covered a multitude of issues that were in both our interests to see move forward. So I was very pleased, and I want to give kudos out to them for the initiative that they have taken since they took office, that they wanted to meet with us right away and forge an alliance that we can all move forward with. I'm very pleased with that and very excited about that. That's all I've got, Mayor.
You want to add the efforts to recoup the sales tax revenue that we talked about?
Let's see, I don't remember, I'm lost.
Oh, you may have.
Oh, yes. We have looked, you know, and we talked about it for some time behind the scenes, about trying to get an additional percentage of our sales tax back from the state. Being one of the, still one of the distressed counties in the state, and the number keeps dwindling, but we've not fell off of it. And the state keeps pledging to assist every distressed county to get off that list. And so one of the ways that they've been doing that is to give a larger percentage of our sales tax back. We get a percentage back now, and if they would just do a half percent or a percent, Gary's got the numbers on what that would generate. I think one of them was over a million dollars that possibly that we could get back. I don't know if that was us, Gary, or the city and the county?
1.8 for the city, it was around 3 for the county.
Okay. And so we were talking about having a concerted effort between the city and the county to push together to try to get that, make that happen. We had been doing that for the last year behind the scenes from the city. Gary and Lucas had made trips down to the Capitol and tried to get it moving down there, and had just been unable to get it anywhere down there. And so with the county now on board and us working together on it, Rob said he felt like that we had a better chance of possibly making that happen. And yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, I'd forgotten about that. It took it a minute for it to float to the top. But that was just one of the many things we talked about. We spent all morning with Mayor Mathis and his finance director, and we had a really, really productive meeting. And same with CJ, when we met with him. And so again, I'm very excited, and I'm hoping we can really see some progress moving forward, working together. I've always felt that way, that the city and the county needed to work together, not against each other. I've seen it both ways in my time here. I've been here 40 years, and I've seen the city and county work together, and I've seen them fight each other, and they get a lot more done when they work together. So, anything else you can think of?
Nope.
Oh, good. Thank you.
All right. Appointment of boards, commissions, and committees, of which there don't appear to be any. Reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Do you have anything, Gary?
No, I don't know. Talked about what happened in Canada last week.
Okay. Then we'll move on to number eight, our old business, unfinished business. Item A is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2022-14, amending the zoning map for the City of Newport to rezone 226 Jayburg Street.
And Mayor, I better read the caption into the record. It's ordinance number 2022-14, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Newport from R-1 Low Pense D Residential to C-2 General Business District located at 226 Jayburg Street, and the adjoining properties identified as 047 PF 037.00 and 047 PF 039.00.
This is for Rural Medical's Extension Project.
Yes. Your motion. Can you bring something up on the screen? You've heard the reading of the ordinance, what is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item B is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2022-15, amending the zoning map for the City of Newport to rezone the Woodlook Park.
And Mayor, that's ordinance number 2022-15, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Newport to include property located at Rankin Road, further described as tax map partial 047 035.01.
Okay, we've heard the reading of the ordinance, what is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion for the property. Second, we need roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item nine, new business. Item A is consideration of reading of ordinance number 2022-16, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And that's ordinance number 2022-16, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2022-2023 for Newport Grammar School.
Reading of the ordinance, motion please.
I'll make a motion. Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board, it's been properly seconded, we need a roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item B is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2022-17, amending the zoning map for the City of Newport rezoning properties, Main Street.
There's a handful of properties on the far west end of Main Street as you go down to, is that C? Or are you on C? What's the one at the very end? Yes. It's currently zone manufacturing. This gives us, we're going to go commercial with it if you guys see fit to approve, because that gives us more of what we're going for, downtown Newport's identity. Right now, someone could come back in and put, it says light manufacturing, but the definitions of that can be pushed to a certain limit, so this would just allow for more of what we're, I think, interested in down in downtown on Main Street.
And Mayor, that's ordinance number 2022-17, an ordinance to amend the zoning map for the City of Newport from M-1 Light Industrial District to C-2 General Business District for properties located on or near Main Street west of the Cosby Highway intersection.
Any questions?
Are these buildings occupied currently by manufacturing?
No, none of them. The only thing that's even got anything in it is the church that's next to the bank. They have a fellowship hall in one of them down there, so it would allow for that use, yeah, within effect, yes. Yeah.
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the board then to approve the consideration of reading of ordinance number 2022-17, amending the zoning map for the City of Newport rezoning properties on Main Street. It's been properly seconded. We have a roll call, please, Tina.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item C is consideration of purchase option agreement between WU Holdings 7 LLC and the City of Newport. Okay.
This came in about two hours ago. The attorney for Ms. Wu and I both agree this is not the best way to do it, but we are running out of time. Well, the contracts on the properties, we're running out of time, and the current property owners aren't necessarily the most interested in extending the due diligence period any longer. So, because I asked her to give us more time, we don't like doing this in the meeting, but we're looking at a multimillion dollar business, so I said we do our best. All right. The main difference in what you've got that I just gave you and what was in the packet is this what I've highlighted here. The original agreement basically says that once the phase one of the church is open, then the Wu Holdings can exercise the option to purchase the property at our current lot at Broadway and McMahon. And then it would be parking only for tenants of the church now. What she has run into, what time are we on the phone here, 9:00, 10:00 Sunday morning, dealing with this, she's gotten into different architects giving her different numbers. So we went from 3 million all the way up to 10, so she wasn't sure what was cost-effective. She has option on the properties. I'll show you. Scroll to the bottom. That's the one document. Can I jump? Yeah, let's see. Okay. Let's shrink down a little. She owns basically everything I've highlighted in blue. This corner property. Here is, that's what Mr. Woods owns, and then Ms. Wu has everything all the way to Woodline. Now.
That she owns or has option.
That's why we're, yeah, that's why we're having to do this now, because once the option expires, I don't know if, Aaron can work his magic, but I don't know if he can get everybody to re-sign. And if we lose one of the properties in it, I don't, what does that look like if you've got three sets of new condos and then the Freeman Building still stands in the shape it's in? So what they wanted to do with the amendment, or the new version, is basically say that, just change the definition of the project. So before, in the original version, the project is the church. This could mean that the project is the development of properties on Main Street and adjacent. So it would, and we're still using, let me get back down here. So what that, that we're looking at now is proof of concept for what the church was going to be, you've got office space, and then tenant space. So basically retail, restaurant, commercial space on the bottom floor, residential in the next two to three stories up. So that, she's committed to that either way, whether she renovates the church or she builds new on Main Street.
So either one triggers, meets the requirement of the law?
Once phase one.
If it's just the church, it's either one.
Either or, what, yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir. The biggest concern about this was losing parking downtown. So we've been trying to address that, and Aaron actually did a lot of legwork on this. If you, well, let me go down one. You can see how the property lines here? Go all the way to beyond the footprint of the building to the, they kind of touch you in the middle. And Ben can tell you that we've. And Ben can tell you that we, where'd you go? We, there's a storm drain right in the middle that we don't necessarily even have right of way to right now. Every time that, we got to work on that thing, we're on private property. We need proper right of way on that. So what we'll be looking at back here is a, well, let me move back up. A public-private partnership between the property owners, which would then be Mr. McMahon himself, Diane Grooms, Betty Ann Beulie, and then Kristy Lou. Am I forgetting somebody? Yes, to grant right of way, or not right of way, but rent the property from the footprint of their building back so that we could then go in, make some repairs to that area and make more public parking. Now, of course, some of it will be dedicated to the property owners there because that, why would they give away all their parking for their employees or even customers? Strapping Woodline gives us more parking for anything that's going to be going on, especially if we're developing Main Street. So, I mean, and that's just an idea, we're looking at two to three years probably before we're cutting the ribbon on either project, just given how the supply chain is at this time anyway. So we've got more time to come up with different ideas. I've reached out to, it was formerly Jones Media, whoever the Plain Talk and the Sun sold out to, about doing a similar agreement over at the lot next to the Plain Talk, so that it would be rented by us. We would go in, blacktop it, stripe it, and then we would have more park, more public parking. And I know that's a little bit further away from the development, but it's just thinking outside the box of how could we replace the parking? And anything that we might lose, I don't have that on the map, do I? Anything we might lose from that lot, we just added one at Broadway and McMahon, to give us more parking density there. Have I covered everything?
You've got Mims Avenue.
Yes, yeah, the strapping up Mims. And we, Aaron and I have tried to communicate with the developer about, because she's got property in LA, Vegas, Sevier County, Newport. And she, she feels that dedicated parking is something that needs to be a part of the project. And in my opinion, I don't think we ever get there because where it's at, we don't have the capacity to add, especially the church, add more density for more buildings so that you'd need more parking because there's more people going in over there. Between Woodline and Jefferson, that's where you'd need to address parking. And I think the lot with the Plain Talk would do that if we could make that arrangement with them. And I don't know, we've been, we've been trying to keep all these pieces moving the past couple of months. I think we're really close. This, the lot kind of makes the deal happen. And, and there are callbacks in the agreement. If, if, until phase one is started, they can't exercise the option and after five years, if for some reason it doesn't happen, we keep the property.
You said it was sort of high-end apartments, didn't you?
Oh, yes, sir. I was talking to Councilman beforehand. Aaron, did she have a price point in mind for rent? I know the idea is.
5,000 plus.
Yeah.
Not looking for six, eight.
Yeah. It's, it's kind of a rent-to-own concept because she wants after 10 years them to be able to purchase the condo.
And that's, that's part of the spending money that.
Yes.
She was allocated for opportunities own. You have to have that and keep that for 10 years for the investment and then thereafter you can sell it off as condos. So that's where she needs that freedom to do.
That was one of the questions that I had received from, from people was, is this going to be low-income housing? And I said I didn't think so, but I'm glad you addressed that.
Yeah.
Because that, that was a question that I had.
Yes, sir. And I'm pretty sure we addressed that real early on because what, what we're looking for, I mean, that's your neighbor now.
And that's the thing. I mean, you can look at proof of concept for the church. When we're talking retail restaurants, indoor swimming pools and stuff like that, we're definitely not looking at low-income housing. And based on not seeing what she has done, but just what we have heard and what we have researched that she has done, everything's pretty upscale.
Yeah, she's, we get a lot of grifters and con artists and she's not one of them. She's, she's legit. She's got the money to do this.
And then the, one thing just to add to that, you know, we've got two other investors that's already, one being invested over here at the hardware building across from my business. Spoken with Eric. I've also spoken with Mikey, who works with Joe Baker, who owned basically all of Woodline. They are all in agreement that they would all like to meet with city officials to develop, to discuss, to propose ideas as to what we can all do together to make this and roll out this plan together as to where it'd be most beneficial to the city and the downtown district.
You've got three legitimate developers right now that, that own property and are looking to, and one's already started, Eric's already started on the hardware building with his concept. So it, it feels more real than it has the whole time I've been here about what we might actually get accomplished. And also, just so, there's, there's a place for low-income housing. It just doesn't necessarily need to be downtown. That's my opinion. That does not reflect the boards, but I just want you to know we're not throwing off on Section 8.
No, no, we got that.
Yeah.
Gary, can we go back to the parking slide that shows the, the new proposed public parking?
Yeah, just my little diagram. I did.
What, approximately how many parking spots are there?
I thought, I thought if you count just the ones in the middle, because that makes the most sense to be public, 10. And I didn't go out with my wheel and do the, and I just was on, I was doing satellites. It's approximation. So.
Is that enough to accommodate what they, what their need is?
Well, that would be the city's need.
Yeah, yes.
Because they want to buy our current parking lot.
Yeah, what she's trying to do, she, she, especially where she's putting that, I think the church, I don't think you need it. I think Mims accommodates it. But if you're building on Main Street first, then the need arises for that because then you're looking at the people that are living there taking all your public spots on Woodline if you don't have dedicated parking for them. And then now what did the businesses on the other side of Woodline do for parking? If they don't build theirs into their plan, then.
So she wants to purchase our lot?
Yes, ma'am.
From us, okay.
We, and again, we tried to negotiate a lease. We, we did everything we could to not have to have the discussion we're having right now because I know that we want to hang on to the assets that we've got, especially when they're serving the public. That's our mission. That's what we do. But this, this is the way she wants to do it and I don't know if anybody else comes along in the next five to 10 years that can do what she's capable of.
Do we know if, if we approve this and sell her our parking lot for her dedicated parking spots, will that lot be able to be used by visitors to the city, to downtown? If the spots are empty? Or are they going to be, is it going to be gated with a card?
See, I don't, I don't, we've not gotten in that discussion with her because she always talked about the city enforcing parking, but that's, like you and I talked about, that's not what we do. So again, I just don't know if I see a, a, a situation where it ever even comes up. And I don't, otherwise you'd have to pay somebody to be down there all the time or put in the infrastructure to have the mechanical arms and whatnot. And I don't even know if you can do, I don't know if it's big enough to do that.
The only thing that we can enforce is on private, which this would be considered private property if we lease it to her and she takes control of it. The only thing we can enforce on private property is fire lane and handicap parking because we do that now in the, in the shopping centers. And that would be all we could do down there would be, and probably wouldn't, there wouldn't be a fire lane because there would be no businesses there. But there could be handicap spaces and we could enforce those. But we could not en forward a, enforce a illegal parking situation. The only way, the way those things are handled currently is they have to put up signage that says, property owners, parking only, all others will be towed at owner's expense. And then the property owner has to have it towed. We, we don't do that for them either. We don't get involved. So that is the only thing that they could do in the way that things are done now. I'm sure you've all saw signage like that on commercial businesses that says, you know, no parking after hours and so on. But, you know, violators can be towed if the signage is there warning them, but we don't, we don't tow them. That has to be done by either a tenant or an owner or somebody with a, with standing over that property.
Aaron, you have the agreement with all this stuff?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Pros and cons in it?
I think the pros, I think we've got an opportunity in front of us. And I think this city, everybody knows, paying attention to social media, we need to do something about these dilapidated and blocked buildings. We have an opportunity. I can't guarantee the outcome, but I can guarantee we have an opportunity. And I think this is probably, I'm 42 years old. I mean, I can tell you two or three things downtown that's new since I've been. I think we've got an opportunity to replace this downtown. And I think this is, this is the time.
Ain't no guarantee that something else will come in this building. It's like on the corner there is a bullet property. No guarantees that will be built back there either.
And I'll tell you, Coach, what I'm looking for is 10 years from now, we're sitting in here having a discussion, trying to figure out how to park.
Yeah.
In downtown, because we're flourishing so well.
That's a good problem to have.
That's what we need to be intentional.
Yeah.
So, and I think we've got a real possibility right now with the three investors to make something really happen.
Don't lose that opportunity, did it?
I don't want to lose that opportunity.
I don't, I don't think we can afford to lose the opportunity. You know, it's, it's one of those deals. Aaron and I have talked about it. I've talked to several of you all about it, the mayor. You know, we, we are obligated to take care of our existing people and we, we want to do everything we can do to do that, but I just, I don't think we can afford to lose this. I don't, like, just like this gentleman said, you know, I've worked for the city for 40 years and this is the first time an opportunity like this has come along. And I, you know, I don't, it may not come back for another 40. I just don't see how we, I don't see how we can not do it and worry about the parking situation as we go along and try to make, figure out a way to make it work. But this is just, it's too good an opportunity for the town and the, the, the community for us to let it away just over that, I think. Now, I don't have a vote and I don't have to take the heat if you go sideways. So that's why I'm not chiming. Well, right. And that's why I'm not chiming being much about it, but, but I don't have to take the heat. You guys do. But that's my two cents worth. I, I don't, I don't think we can afford not to do it.
I don't have a vote either, but I'm, I'm in a concurrence with James and, you know, guys, we, we've been looking for opportunities ever since I've been in office anyway for like this and it, they don't come along very often. I don't care if you're in Sevierville or wherever. We, we need to try to take advantage of every opportunity we get, especially in the multimillion dollar projects. We, we really need to try and get this done.
Hey, I have to. Success breeds success. So if you've got new building going up and you've got new interest investment and then people get excited about that, that's why I'm adding additional investment.
Amen.
Aaron, what is Ms. Wu's timeline on getting started with the first phase?
She got to take a clock because of the investments there.
She's got to take a clock because she's got opportunities on money. So at the time we first met Ms. Wu, I think we were around 23, 24 months. Now we're probably somewhere around 16 to 17 months.
And that's in first shovel in the ground. That's not necessarily getting completed, but that's.
That's correct. That's correct. And, and, you know, just the architectural blueprints, stuff like that, that starts the clock rolling. I mean, that helps do the stuff initially. Ms. Wu, just with architects, has already invested quite heavily, actually. So I don't know, you know, the timeframe, I would like to, I want it as soon as possible, just like anybody else.
Yeah, well, you too.
I would say.
I, I would.
She's got deadlines and she's got.
I would say is about the time that we're cutting the ribbon on the first one would be when the bypass is done. So you'd calm the traffic downtown with the trucks and whatnot. And then we're looking at like a totally different place down here. And then just the more quaint things, such as Jake breaks and our pavement getting jacked up, 18-wheelers.
That's the other thing. I mean, and I think that's one of the necessaries that we were talking with coordinating and working with a couple of the other guys here is let's try to start some things happening at the same time to where we're not being disruptive to the downtown flow.
Yeah.
You know, so try to get in there and knock it out as soon as we can.
Sure.
You both mentioned retail opportunities. Are there confidentiality agreements or can you dish a little?
I'm, I'm not under one. Are you?
I'm not under one.
Okay, then I don't know anything good then.
So, so basically, as far as, I can say that.
Help us, Sally.
Just in overall conversations.
I don't, I don't think she does business with thrift stores a lot. Now, again, not there's anything wrong with thrift stores. We all need a thrift store. We need a dry goods bag.
Well, that's the thing. Ms. Wu has a restaurant background as well. I do know that she was in the musical business as well, very heavily involved in a, in actually making instruments overseas. Several investments that she has, I know they're building 11, seven bedroom cabins in Sevier County right now. That's not cheap. We know that. That's not cheap, seven bedroom cabins.
And two, not that this would do anything else, but she's looking at, she owns property on the Cosby Highway that she's looking to develop. She owns, she wants to do more residential development not far from that and be annexed into the city. So, I mean, it's not just these two projects that maybe.
So far, I mean, just in the, the auction, she's already invested over me. So, I mean, I think we're somewhere around being one right now. I think I'm hearing apartment complexes, I'm hearing hotels, I'm hearing additional restaurants and commerce such as that. I think Ms. Wu has the connections from what I'm seeing and from what I'm hearing from other people that are coming to me and saying, hey, do you know who that is and, you know, whatnot? We know who she is. So I think she's got the mix to bring in commerce, you know, on her own.
That's.
I'll shut up and answer that. So if she's going, if she's going to develop, she's not going to get an amendment from any retailer to go in there as a tenant until this, until there are structures going up. That's just, they don't get creative, you know, the creative process. Unless they are the developer and the leasing going in and do it, they are already the branch, the branch occupancy, that doesn't, that doesn't happen. There's typically a land development partner and a lease factor and then the branch occupancy that goes along with that. So odds are even if she's having discussions, she's not going to be able to dip off on a beating.
Fine.
This is going to be square footage and this is what it's going to look like. Different one. No trickery is that.
Her Sevier County consultants that she uses are pretty high up on her. And I mean, you know, they see all kinds of money coming through there, billions, not millions, in investment happening in Sevier County and, and they're pretty high up on her. So, I mean, that could all be, you know, we, Aaron and I could be wrong, but I've seen plenty of things that I, I think I can tell when somebody's legit and not at this point. And I, I think she's, I think she's legit.
Business is a risk.
Always. Better not beat the door down to get downtown anyway.
Yeah, you've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure? This is consideration.
Would there be any stipule? I can go back to the attorney and have it approve contingent on something changing if there's wording that you're not comfortable with. Terry and I both reviewed it. It's, I, I just wanted to make sure there were protections so that we didn't lose the property if this didn't happen. I think we're good there. And basically, it's beholding her to some type of, no less than a multimillion dollar development.
We need a motion.
Make a motion, accept that.
I'll say it.
Okay, we do have a motion on the board for, for the consideration of purchase option agreement between Wu Holdings Seven LLC and the city of Newport. It has been properly seconded. Please, we need a roll call, please.
Alderman Conneball?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item D is consideration of Newport Fire Department purchase increase for pickup truck.
Mayor and board, I came to you guys in May to request to purchase an F150 2022 model. Mayor and board, I came to you guys in May to request to purchase an N50 2022 model, and you guys had, had allowed me $34,000. Well, it was supposed to be here in September. Well, when September came and we called, they said that Ford had canceled all 2022 orders, and we have to go to a 2023. So that, that's why I'm here now, and of course, they didn't stay the same price, they, they've raised that price up. So, the same vehicle that they quoted in May, they quoted me in September now, is $9,000 more, so $34,000 to $43,000. So it's about a $9,000 increase, that's, that's what I was asking the board for permission. We do have, I do have the money in the budget for that. We'd actually allotted originally $45,000, and then when it came in at the price, I had enough to play with, with lights and sirens and stuff like that. So, I think we have another project that's going to be put on hold now, so I, I do have some money to move around with that. If you guys have any questions or...
Any questions? Questions? Okay, you've heard the presentation, what's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion. I'll go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve consideration of Newport Fire Department purchase increase for pickup truck from $34,000 to $43,000. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your, well, I need a roll call.
Alderman Conneball?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Item B is discussion of November election day. And what I've been told was that the election day is on the 8th, and it will be the same day as city council. So we need to come to an agreement on how we want to handle that.
As I discussed with the mayor earlier, in the past, they, they have canceled meetings, and they've also reset meetings to an alternate day. So, either way has been done before. So you, you have the, those are your options, to move it to another day, or just cancel it altogether. So whatever y'all's pleasure is, that's what we'll do.
You just can't have it, and like, close the doors?
Well, you're going to have, you know, the, the election workers are going to be here, the public's going to be coming, they're going to have the parking lots, you're not going to have any parking, I, I mean, you could try to, but they've always...
If they don't, they come to agenda, they don't have it.
They've always, they've just always not had it on election day. I mean, if y'all want to have it there, we'll, got to make it work. That's just what's always been done.
If we cancel anything, it just gets carried to the next month.
Correct.
I make a motion to cancel.
Second. Okay, we have a motion then on the board to, to totally cancel, we're not talking about resetting, right?
No.
Just cancel it until December.
If there's something coming, you said you could let us know.
Well, I mean, if something, if something that's overhyped, and we can always call, call meeting.
Yeah, right. Okay, so we have a motion on the board to cancel the November meeting, and over the 8th meeting, it has been properly seconded. Please, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
All in nays like sign? Motion carries. Item 10, and item A is consideration of bids for Skylift.
We added that one, we added it out.
We added the, the...
Oh, yeah, the, yeah, I just need permission to move forward, once we have the project submitted, and then they'll come back, and then we really and truly choose whether we're accepting the money or not, because then, it'll probably be a sewer line extension and a sewer line replacement in Northport slash Richland Park. Those are our pressing needs, and it's, it's a chunk of money, but it does not go far when you're talking about the needs that Newport Utilities has with replacing those utilities, the replacing the sewer lines. But then you, but whenever we get there to that point, we'll have a whole, we'll have a whole presentation for you about like what you're actually voting on. Now we're just, I'm asking permission to basically put in a request for funding from the state.
One thing that, that I told Gary when we first discussed this, because it could only be used for like water, sewer, and stormwater, that the only position I had on it was that the monies had to be spent first inside the city. That, because we have a multitude of issues inside the city that need to be addressed, and that if we, if we go, go for this money and we get it, I wanted it earmarked for city projects first, and then if there was money left over, it could go to whatever the next biggest need was. But that was my position on it. And so he, he did a, a little study on it, and he's confident that all the money can be spent in the city, so.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve, Gary, you making an inquiry for the state?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to, on the board to accept, for acceptance of money from grants from the state?
That's project submitted, I guess, yeah, it takes technically what it is, and then we'll do the acceptance when it's approved.
Okay. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye?
Aye.
And in nays like sign? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item A is consideration of bids for Skylift Scissor Lift for Parks and Recreation.
Hello, how are you guys? We, we are looking at getting a scissor lift, and we do have budgeted money for, for it, as you have noticed, and it is a little higher than what we thought when we budgeted. We did ask if we could go ahead and increase the $9,000, but we went over our budget today, and me and Tim and Tina, and we have that, so we can use budgeted monies. We are not going to have to have anything, you know, added to our budget for this item. And we just wanted to see if we can get it to make it a little bit easier for when we go inside of our buildings, and when we go really high, I have the men having to use ladders that are very high, and that's very unsafe, and it's very hard for them to move some of our equipment up that's in the top of our jail, inside of the pool area, we're not over the pool, but around the pool. And, you know, we have the big ladders, and they're extremely, here you do, you have two, and I just, we just feel it'd be a lot safer if they have that, and they have a foundation to stand on and be able to use their equipment on it, and not have to worry about them falling off the ladder or getting hurt. And it seems to be where our, as the years have gone by since I've been there, we've been doing more and more projects and more and more things in buildings and on the outside of buildings that this piece of equipment will help tremendously with. And so we were just asking, and we do, we would like it to be delivered, and we talked to Tina about it. And the reason we were going with that is because the insurance, for us to pick it up and bring it, it would be, it would be more beneficial, and to keep it under their, their warranties and their insurance than ours, and have them deliver it to us. And it just added, I believe it added not much to it, and of course, we don't pay tax, so that won't be on there at all.
So that delivery fee is in addition to the $9,000?
Nope, it's all in, it's all, it was all in there.
It's all in the $9,000?
And we do have the budgeted money to use for this.
Is there only one bid?
There was only one bid.
And to start with, we had to rebid it. We got no bids the first time we put it out to bid.
Yes, a lot of the, a lot of these companies, and some of them that we talked to said it will be two years to a year before you could even get one. And so we kind of been looking and trying to see, you know, what is going on with the market with them, and it's very hard to find. And this, when I talked to the company that brought it in, they wanted to make sure that we got the bid, they, they really didn't know how to put in a bid for government. And these are mom and pop places that have no idea and don't ever do hire, you know, where they do bids and stuff. So they were, we had three or four of them that had no idea how to send it to us, and they all gave it to us late. And it was like, you can't do that, it has to be on this day and that, so sorry, you have to resubmit. And this was the only company that actually resubmitted it, and she wanted to make sure we got it and make sure, so she was, you know, but they do have it in stock, so we don't have to wait for it to be built, we don't have to wait a year or two years before we can get it. And we were just asking for your approval.
Ma'am, I'll make a motion to be approved.
Is it brand new?
It's brand new, yes, ma'am.
Second.
Okay, we have most on the board there to approve purchase, additional $9,000 to the budget for a purchase of a scissor lift for the parks and recreation, it has been properly seconded. Please, well, roll call, please.
Alderman Conneball?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item B is consideration of bids for railroad pedestrian crosswalk improvement.
This is a phase two, I, I think I probably just told you all this last month, but it's a phase two of this signalization project over here, it's 100% safety money, we pay for it upfront and then get reimbursed. It's a couple of pedestrian signals, some striping, and some concrete work over here next to the pharmacy, which is needed. That's one of our, it's, it is ADA-ish compliant, but it needs to be better, so that'll clean that up too.
Okay, heard the presentation, what's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to accept that bid. Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve the bid for railroad pedestrian crosswalk improvement, has been properly seconded. Please, well, let's see, we need a roll call.
Alderman Conneball?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 11 is comments from citizens.
A lot of few things I'd like to say, because I know it's probably my last meeting. It's been the smallest state year that I've ever seen, it went by real fast. There've been good times and bad times, or sad times, but we made it through it, and I just wanted to tell everybody, especially all of our apartment heads, because I've not had one of you that didn't work with me, didn't help, you know, help out in any way, the employees, all them that worked real well, and the mayor, the vice, not the vice mayor, but James Fincher, we've all tried to work together. And I'd like to congratulate too the aldermen that's left in here, hope all of them makes it, I endorse them all. I've got a little article that's coming out in the paper that you'll see that, I think we've got a good, we agree with each other, or not agree with each other, we try to sit down and work it out in a civil manner, and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate that, I just wanted you to know how much I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, Coach.
It's been a pleasure working with you. I've learned a lot.
And we, we want you, since we're not going to meet in November, we want you to attend the next meeting, and everybody is, but theoretically should be in December, and we want you to be here.
I appreciate it. Me and Mr. Williams will be back there, I want Mr. Williams. You're a good kid.
Yeah, I look forward to not being kicked under the table, to move home. Well, it's been a pleasure, Coach.
Thank you, same here. You're an asset to our community.
Definitely.
Have been for years, not just with the city, government, with, with our young people, and everybody we've come in contact with. Thank you all a bunch.
Any other comments from citizens? Hearing none, we'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Somebody.
Second.
We're adjourned.